...itself up into various regional planning agencies, councils of elected officials, and councils of governments. These entities have been constituted over periods of time in the communities for which our part of them have elected to join. There has been in the past, and I believe I alerted you several years ago, of a bill to convert the regional planning agencies to councils of governments. What that means is presently we have the Southwest Regional Planning Agency in Greenwich is represented by two of your members, Bob Burns and Paul Settlemeyer. In addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a delegate to it as well. They make up the RPA. There is in addition the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the chief elected officials of the eight towns. Now, the primary purpose of this entity is primarily focused on the distribution of transportation funds, but over years has delved into other aspects of planning as it relates to the economy, to housing, and other issues central to community life. What is before the legislature is a proposal to mandate that the present entities form councils of government and to expand. And the concern that I and other chief elected officials have within the present entity is that this is going to become a precursor to county government or a transfer of responsibilities that are presently done by the states to the regions without the commensurate funding to go along with it. I simplify in my comments and frankly in my understanding is that it would be a redistributive action, meaning it would take things that are done by the state, give it to these reconstituted regions, set up a formulaic way of allocating those funds that are presently given, and parsing it out based on perhaps per capita, per head. In that configuration, Greenwich, I believe, stands to lose out, and I think some of the other communities feel that way as well. So I share it with you because it does involve the RTM. The RTM ultimately was the entity that voted to become part of SWRPA many, many years ago. Perhaps Joan Codwell perhaps remembers that period. It was 30, 40 years ago. It was not -- I say that as -- there's no need to laugh about that. I say that because she could tell you firsthand the angst that the town had about getting intertwined in such an entity. Tonight with me here is Bob Burns. He is part of the RPA, and perhaps he could add something to what I've said, but it primarily is to make you aware of it and to also reinforce a point that I've been trying to make publicly, and that is, as the state looks at the financial situation, it is talking in terms of, of course, the word efficiencies. And I have somewhat of a problem with that word because it can be often misrepresented or altered, but what they're essentially doing is reconstituting a geographic boundary and establishing new parameters in which resources and services may be delivered. All of that has a monetary connection, and I think you should be aware of it, and I'm here tonight primarily for that purpose. So we are trying to put forward testimony as a group, the eight towns in southwest Connecticut, and I will tell you, I was on a conference call today with some of the other chief elected officials, and to arrive at a consensus to write testimony for this hearing on Thursday is quite a challenge, but I can tell you, out of the eight towns, I believe only two have some modicum of interest in doing this. Now, Westport voted to go the council of government route. Weston, the chief elected official supports it, but she has not brought it to the bodies that would have to approve it. The other towns have all expressed reluctance, if not opposition, to changing the present platform by which we participate in this planning exercise or planning function. So if I may, Bob Burns, if you can add anything to what I said, please do. You've been at this long and hard.
Thank you, Peter. I would only add two things. Number one, we really don't know what we don't know. Number two, what we do know is not particularly appealing to our community. Pardon me? I'll start over. Two points. One, we really don't know what we don't know. It is in the process of developing, and Peter thought this was an appropriate time to bring it to the body so that at least you got a heads up. Secondly, what we do know relative to this legislation is not particularly of our appeal. And I was involved with the telephone conversation this afternoon, and I echo what Peter said. The rest of the communities are not in favor of it all, with one and two exceptions. This is being pushed by the state. This is being pushed by the current administration. We're not sure where it's going, other than it's on a fast track, and we suspect probably something will develop relatively soon.
Is there anything you recommend that we do now?
Well, I think that the train has left the tracks as far as what we're doing, and Peter is working with respect to trying to help architect what the testimony is on this Thursday. There is one hearing that's going to be held.
When?
Thursday.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM.
Where?
Hartford.
All right. Can we do it by Skype? Thank you very much. Leslie Moriarty, Chairman of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I ask to address the RTM tonight to update you briefly on the status of the MESA project and their request for additional appropriation. As you know, the budget approved by the BET in March does not include any additional appropriation for MESA. This is because the Board of Ed received information about the project bids just one week before the BET budget vote. The Board of Ed felt it needed additional time to review the bids and alternatives before seeking funding. The Board of Ed is meeting this Wednesday to determine its recommendation for the MESA project. At that time, we will review the current design as well as several options that could reduce project costs, and we would then expect to submit a request for an interim appropriation to the BET. The BET has agreed to take up this item at its April 15 meeting, and if approved, the item would be included in the RTM May budget meeting as an interim appropriation. The Board of Education believes it's important for the RTM to be able to consider the MESA project within the context of its traditional budget meeting and vote in May. Board of Ed members will be attending both committee and district meetings in May and will be available to discuss the project with you and answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Drake, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. On March 28, the Budget Overview Committee met and discussed the budget, had an extensive discussion. We identified and spoke of, it was discussed, specific line item expense reductions among operating expenses. Those were in information technology, in the area of general government, in the Department of Public Works, in the area of external entities, in human resources, and in RTM operations. We expect to refine these ideas, and they may come to you as possible budget reductions to consider at the May meeting. We also examined some capital issues, particularly the digital learning initiative, MESA, and the Human Resource Capital Management System, again, items that we expect to look at further that you may hear about in May when we've done further work. Apart from that, we did examine a list of general budget recommendations that deserve to be worked on in cooperation with the BET and the Selectmen's Office and the Board of Education. We voted to approve eight of them, and you received a brief summary of them all by email. I won't go into them in detail here. I'll collect a quickie list then, and we're not imposing them for a vote this evening or a discussion. This is just an informational report. The eight topics were reorganization, is there, are there efficiencies to be obtained in the reorganization of the tax assessor and tax collector function? The second one is, would it be worthwhile to reexamine police staffing in Greenwich Avenue? The third one was a reexamination--
I think they're having trouble hearing.
Sorry about that. Let me back up. The second one was reexamine, would it be worthwhile to reexamine police staffing in Greenwich Avenue? Better? The third one was reexamination of the student-teacher ratio. Quick mathematics was a 1% change in the student-teacher ratio, is a 1% reduction in teacher count, which is worth a million dollars. Fourth one was MESA. We recommended to revalue engineer the MESA project. The fifth one was to review the digital learning environment initiative, really with the concept that introduction of technology should not only improve education, but should reduce costs as well. The sixth one was to examine charging for waste recycling at Holly Hill. We don't, we're the only town around that doesn't charge for that, and there's potentially millions of dollars of revenue available to the town were we to charge. The seventh one was Public Works. Should we reexamine and cost-reduce leaf pickup in the portions of town where the town picks up leaves? And the eighth one was a general initiative to continue outsourcing where it can be productively and efficiently done. So those eight initiatives were voted and approved by our committee. You've got the votes. I won't go into, they were separately voted on, and no need to repeat all that here, but these things we, again, we thought just deserved to be considered in cooperation with the parties that make budgets in our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the call of tonight's meeting. I informed our district and committee chairs that I will recommend the following organization of our agenda tonight. Shortly, I will recommend the following four items be placed on our consent calendar. Those are items four, 10, 11, and 15. If they remain on our consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports and have no discussion on those items. I will recommend that we combine for voting purposes items 1, 3, 5, 7, 8, 12, 14, 16, and 17, which would leave to consider separately items 6, 9, 13, and 18, item two having been withdrawn. With respect to item 18, that is the C-PACE authorization, there is a sheet up front, if anyone would like to put their name on it as interested in speaking on that item, I encourage you to do that. All right. At this point, I will now, pursuant to our rules, designate the following items to be placed on our consent calendar. The first is item four, which is a resolution appointing Robert Burns to be a member of the Southwestern Regional Planning Agency for a term expiring March 31, 2016. The next is item 10. That is a resolution appointing Kathryn Wiesenberg to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2016. The next is item 11, a resolution appointing Nancy Kaplan to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for the term expiring March 31, 2016. And the final item for our consent calendar is item 15, a resolution appointing Andrew Fox to be a member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring March 31, 2016. Is there any objection to the designation of those four items to our consent calendar? Hearing none, will our district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items four, 10, 11, and 15, and proceed to pull your delegation? It was the consensus of the reporting districts which numbered two. I encourage our districts to please make recommendations as to how we should organize our agenda, but it was the consensus to combine for voting purposes items 1, 3, 5, 7, 8, 12, 14, 16, and 17 for voting purposes. In order to do that, it requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 1, 3, 5, 7, 8, 12, 14, 16, and 17 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine those items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. All right. We will begin with the first of the combined items. Item number one was postponed from our March meeting, so it is now before us. This is a resolution to appropriate the sum of $220,000 to be added to a capital account known as Generator Program. May we have the committee reports on item number one? John DeChappel, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Like last time-- Is working? Like last time, we voted 12-0-0 in favor of it. We were heavily informed by Al Meneli and by Amy Seibert for Public Works as to why we need generators. There was some hesitation despite the vote that they were expensive. Typical person puts a generator in a modest-sized home, anywhere from eight to 12 grand. These generators are over $100,000 each, and one goes into the dog pound, to the animal shelter, sorry, and the other one goes to the Holly Hill Transfer Station. They're far more sophisticated, and that was the contention in the first place, until we understood the need for the sophistication of these generators. We were hesitant, but we were told that they were necessary, so we voted unanimously for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Finance Committee met one week ago in the Town Hall Lounge at 7:30, then adjourned at 8:05.
All right.
Thank you. Is it better?
No.
Is it better? Mr. Ennis, just hang on one moment. Mr. Conway, is there anyone in here who can turn the microphones up from the board?
Not to my knowledge. They have to speak into, directly into them. They should raise them up.
Well, I know the controls are right here.
I don't know too much about those.
All right. So I encourage all speakers, please pull that microphone close to you. Thank you. Mr. Ennis, proceed.
I will embrace the mic. I always follow the advice of the moderator. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I was advising you that the Finance Committee met last week at 7:30, covered two items. All districts but District 10 were available for those votes, and then at 8:05, met with the Legislative and Rules Committee to hear a report on item 18 and also an update on the Joint Committee for Lease Policy. And following that session, Finance Committee went down to the lounge again and completed our business. The explanos on item one were very much improved over what we saw last time, and the committee had very little discussion. The vote was 11-0-0. All districts present voted yes. So the committee advises you and suggests that you support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item one. Linda Bruno.
RTM, RTM, okay, how's this? All right. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, RTM members and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I understand that this item is now on the combined calendar, so make it very brief. My name is Linda Bruno, and I'm on the Advisory Board of Shelter R Strays, the nonprofit entity associated with the animal shelter in Greenwich. I'm also a former RTM member from District 7, and it's great to see everyone tonight. We're here to voice our support for the installation of a generator at our town shelter. I'm joined tonight by three colleagues. Leora Levy and Sherry Werneke represent the Shelter R Strays Advisory Board, and Karen Coyle, along with Leora and Sherry, serve on a town committee formed by the Board of Selectmen to implement an emergency evacuation plan for pets and their owners in Greenwich. And we'd just like to point out the following. Federal and state laws mandate that emergency preparedness, local emergency preparedness plans include provisions for pets and service animals. The law was passed after Hurricane Katrina, when people refused to evacuate because they would not leave their pets behind. This resulted in the deaths of thousands of pets. People died as well, and those who were rescued put emergency responders in great danger. So this federal law, number 109308, states that emergency plans must include pets for governments to qualify for FEMA grants. Our town shelter plays a key role in the emergency plans for Greenwich. A generator is essential for the shelter to provide continuous service to the public and to comply with these laws. The portion of the shelter where the animals are housed has no windows. This was designed in order to meet planning and zoning requirements to satisfy noise concerns. This means that there is no light or ventilation at the shelter during a power outage. Emergency backup power is needed not only for the animals, but for the shelter staff who operate the facility. They work seven days a week, operate there, and work much longer than their scheduled hours during emergencies. The staff needs a safe, fully functioning facility in order to serve the citizens of Greenwich. So we respectfully request that the RTM vote in favor of generators for the animal shelter and the Holly Hill Transfer Station. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item one. Item three now comes before us. May we have the resolution, oh, no, that is also an item postponed from our March meeting, so item three, which is a resolution appointing Stephen Katz to be a member of the Commission on Aging with a term expiring March 31, 2016, is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
This is very confusing. Come on. Does that work? No. How about that? Well. All right. How about this? Okay, good. I'll stand on my tiptoes because that appears to be the only way it works. Good evening. So Health and Human Services met last week with Mr. Katz to discuss his nomination to the Commission on Aging. Mr. Katz owns and operates Sterling Care, which he founded in 2009, and Sterling Care is a home health care agency that provides medical and non-medical home care services to the elderly as well as people with special needs. Sterling Care strives to provide a holistic approach to home care services utilizing a variety of service professionals such as physical therapists, occupational therapists, social workers, nutritionists, nurses, et cetera, in order to provide the client with the most comprehensive and consistent home-based home health care. Sterling Care is the only locally owned and operated home health care agency in Greenwich. Prior to starting Sterling Care, Mr. Katz was the chief operating officer of a company called FineTix. He holds both a JV and an MBA degree. He also served in the RTM representing District 6, and he once chaired that district. Given Mr. Katz's experience with providing home health care services to the elderly in town and his strong business background, our committee felt that he would be a valuable addition to the Commission on Aging, especially as the Commission looks for creative and cost-effective ways to provide services to Greenwich's expanding seniors population. Our vote was 11-0-1, with District 8 abstaining, and the reason for the abstention was the delegate works for the Department of Social Services, and some of his clients use Sterling Care, so he didn't want there to appear to be a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of the Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, we met on, Mr. Katz on 3/27. The vote was 11-0-0. The main concern with Mr. Katz was his very great experience in the field and his strong business experience in the local area. Therefore, we focused in on what might be considered appearance of conflict of interest. We wanted to make sure that that was thoroughly examined and exhausted, which we did. As you can see, the vote was 11-0-0. We were satisfied that there was not any considerable conflict of interest to worry about. In fact, his experience would be an add-on to it, so we recommend him. Thank you.
Discussion on item three. Item five now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Leslie Moriarty, Chair of the Board of Education.
Mr. Moderator, I have a substitute resolution for item five. The two changes are more specific wording regarding the grant benefiting the Chinese language program and including language to also appropriate the grant monies to specific accounts. The new resolution is as follows. Resolve that the town of Greenwich accept a grant for $11,000 for Confucius Classroom, which provides assistance in identifying and developing a partnership with a school in China organized by the Asia Society. Said amounts be and hereby appropriated to the following accounts. F6051641-53100, $10,000 teaching supplies, and F605164152100, $1,000 for travel expenses.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Mark Pruner, Vice Chairman of our Education Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met on April 1st to discuss this item, the grant of $11,000. The funds are from the Asia Society, a group founded by the Rockefellers, to be given to the high school's world language program. Dr. McCursey, Super VOE Chair Leslie Moriarty was there, and Ms. Lynn Young, the Chinese program coordinator, gave us a very nice presentation. We actually should be honored to be on this list since only five schools in Connecticut will be getting these funds. It will expand the depth and scope of learning Chinese. There are 160 students at the high school taking Chinese in eight classes, from beginner through AP and honors level. And we applauded the initiative, and we always like to get money, so we voted 11-0-0. District 2 abstained.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. All right. Before calling for the next item, I do have the result of the vote on our consent calendar items. Those were items four, 10, 11, and 15. Those in favor, 187; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. Item seven now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? David Ormsby, Chair of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and members of the RTM. On behalf of Nathaniel Witherell, I would like to place on the floor of the meeting the resolution in the form in which it is set out as item seven in the call for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee with that report.
Hi. So Ray Augustine, the Director of Nathaniel Witherell's Financial Operations, met with our committee last week to present this item. Last year, when the 2013 budget was submitted to the town, it was assumed that Project Renew would begin construction by September 2012. However, as we all know, the construction was delayed until January of 2013. It was also anticipated that if construction had begun on time, then the Witherell census would be lower, and as a result, there would be reduced costs for certain supplies and personnel services. For example, maintaining a lower census would result in the need to reduce the amount of food, medical supplies, custodial supplies ordered, et cetera. It would also have resulted in a smaller staffing pattern to accommodate the reduced residential population. Because the census did not go down and the building was running at its usual and customary high occupancy rate, the anticipated cost reductions were not realized. The good news is, is that because Witherell was able to run with normal occupancy levels for that time, it does anticipate a roughly $300,000 increase in revenues above the amount that they submitted in the 2013 budget figures. The largest part of this appropriation is that of $241,000 for the town allocated services. This year, Witherell saw a 28% increase in the amount it was charged for town services such as information technology, human resources, purchasing lea, et cetera, and the fringe benefits associated with those departments such as pensions, social security, health care, social security for its workers, workers' comp, unemployment insurance. Moving forward, it's going to be very difficult for Witherell to keep up with those costs at the rate that they are being paid.
at the rate that they are being incurred, and it may be more cost-effective in the future for them to explore the possibility of outsourcing some of these services. Our committee believes that Witherall is doing everything possible to generate revenue and control their costs, and that the reasons for this appropriation were beyond their control, and we voted 12-00 to support the appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with the report of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted this item 11-10. District Seven voted no, basically because it was hard to accept that Nathaniel Witherall was surprised their allocated pension costs were increasing as much as they did in the current environment. The explenos are pretty straightforward. We had a good explanation of this item by the board and the CFO, and we encourage you to vote in support of it.
Thank you. Discussion on item seven. Item eight now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? David Teis, our selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Nathaniel Witherall Board for a term expiring 3/31/16, Karen Sada Khan.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eight has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. So we met with Karen Sada Khan last week. I think, as we all know, Ms. Sada Khan is a longstanding member of the RTM representing District Six, as well as chairing the RTM's Parks and Recreation Committee for many years. In addition to her work with the RTM, she also has a deep involvement with Nathaniel Witherall. Approximately 18 months ago, she joined the Board of the Friends of Witherall, and now she is President of that group. The Friends of Nathaniel Witherall is the 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization which supports the work of the Nathaniel Witherall through philanthropy and conducting fundraising and community activities throughout the year. Ms. Sada Khan's involvement with the Witherall began approximately nine years ago. Her late husband and her mother both received rehabilitation services there, and she found both the care and the staff to be of the highest quality. She believes that the Witherall is an asset to the town and must be preserved. While much of her present experience with Witherall has been through her involvement with the Friends, she would like to also help make decisions on the operational side, where, in her words, "the real decisions are made." If successfully appointed to the Board, Ms. Sada Khan would continue to remain as President of the Friends, as there is no conflict of interest, and they are about to embark on a large capital campaign to support Project Renew. Our committee voted 12-00 to support this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I hope everybody can hear me. Embracing the mic is kind of liberal for me, but we'll see what we can do. We met on the 27th of this month with Ms. Sada Khan. Vote was 11-00 with District One absent. Most of it's been covered. We all know Ms. Sada Khan pretty well. She's quite a force in her own right. This main focus is now going in Project Renew to the fundraising, as we've all known. We're waiting on that. It's beginning. Ms. Sada Khan is rather instrumental in that, and we're hopefully pushing it. I see Mr. Ornsby is here tonight. Perhaps, if you want, we can pass the hat to kick it off. Any kind of contribution you'd like, he'd be ready to receive at the back of the room. 11-00. Excuse me. 11-00, yes.
Discussion on item eight. Item 12 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? David Teis, once again, our selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen to be reappointed a member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring 3/31/18, Eris Christ.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 12 has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee met last Monday evening. All districts were represented. Mr. Eris Christ came before us. He is being reappointed to the Historic District Commission. This would be his third term. Mr. Christ explained Historic District Commission's role. It reviews proposed changes to properties in our historic districts and our various historic properties. Secondly, the Historic District Commission provides input and advice to the Planning and Zoning Commission on applications in the town's various historic structures, including all of Greenwich Avenue. And Diane Fox was with us, and she told us that Planning and Zoning Commission received and incorporated Historic District Commission's recommendations for several new buildings on Greenwich Avenue that have been recently constructed and that are being built as we speak. Thirdly, Mr. Christ explained that the Historic District Commission has very limited authority when somebody wants to tear down a house or a building that's not in a historic district. They can try to persuade the owner to preserve some or all of the structure, but in the end, this is a frustrating exercise that I think you've probably heard about. Our vote on Mr. Christ-- by the way, Mr. Christ is an architect, and he's one of two architects on this commission. He explained that it's important that we have architects on the commission, not just people interested in historic preservation. Our vote on Mr. Christ was 10 in favor, 1 opposed, 1 abstention. The no vote came from District Two, who was basically sharing Mr. Christ's frustration in not being able to preserve more historic structures in the town. This was not a vote against Mr. Christ personally, just frustration with the slow erosion of our quality of life because of the loss of historic structures. So again, our vote was 10 in favor, 1 opposed, 1 abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Mr. Christ on the 27th this month, last month. We voted 11-01. District Six abstaining. I think the feeling was somewhat like that expressed in the other abstention. Mr. Christ has been very active in this town. Many of us know him from his many activities in giving to the town besides his professional architectural career. He's also, as some of you may remember, on the MESA Building Committee. Mr. Christ's advantage on the Historic District Commission is explaining that, by and large, when anything's outside of the historic district over which they have complete authority and control, anything outside of that in this town is basically a matter of persuasion by the Historic District Commission. When you have a very experienced and thoughtful and creative architect on the board, it helps to show owners of these historical properties ways that you can have a win-win in order to do what they need to do to take an old building and use it in modern times, but to keep the historic properties involved. So Mr. Christ has been very active in that and very valuable. Again, we voted for him, 11 in favor, with 1 abstention.
Discussion on item 12. Item 14 now comes before us. Drew Marzullo, our selectman.
Mr. Moderator, members of the body, resolve that the following named person be nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring 3/31/16, Winston Robinson.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 14 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Vulgaris with the report of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Health and Human Services met with Mr. Robinson last week to discuss his nomination. Mr. Robinson is a lifelong resident of Greenwich. He served on numerous boards and councils throughout the town, such as the Red Cross Tag, CCI, Block Grant, and the United Way Planning Council. He's also a 24-year employee of the Housing Authority. Through Mr. Robinson's long career at the Housing Authority, he has gained a deep understanding of the needs of the residents who utilize social services. He also understands how a poor economy has strained the resources of the department as it struggles to serve more clients with virtually no increase in resources. Mr. Robinson believes that the biggest contribution he can bring to the board is his understanding of the Housing Authority and helping the department to navigate that system, especially since so many of the clients of the department are also residents of the Housing Authority. Our vote was 12-00 in favor of this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Robinson met with us on the 19th of March. The vote was 11-00. Mr. Robinson's experience, particularly in the area of social service and the related agencies, has been quite deep. Something that we need in social services to give us a more depth in the client service that we're presenting for the people that Board of Social Services serves, a large number being from, of course, the Housing Authority tenancy, as well as CCI, which many of you know has been a valiant and hard work for both the elderly and the youth in our town. So we voted again, 11-00, recommend it to you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 14. Item 16 now comes before us. Bob Kick, Assistant Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. Resolve that the sum of $203,375 be in the same as hereby appropriated from the general fund balance to the Greenwich Fire Department's filing accounts to offset expenses for Superstorm Sandy. Overtime account 205-51100, $167,276. General supplies account 207-53350, $716. General repairs account 205-54200, $11,857. And replacing damaged equipment account number 205-53950, $23,526.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of that resolution? Resolution on item 16 has been moved and seconded. Gordon Ennis with the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The committee met and voted 12-00 on this item. My report and the explenos obviously have been widely circulated, and I think that pretty much summarizes our feelings about it. We urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. John DeChappell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
We are unanimously in favor. They already spent the bucks anyway. You have to understand that salt air, if you've seen some pine trees around us, havoc, and they did a lot of havoc with the equipment that the fire department had, so we had to spend those dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. John Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We voted 11-00 on this item. I think the issues have already been discussed. There was no new news. We did have guests, the chief and District Chief Millet. We also had three people on our committee who have participated in Superstorm Sandy, and we were duly acknowledged for their participation. All but District Four were present in voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Discussion on item 16. And the last of our combined items now comes before us. Item 17. Leslie Moriarty, Chair of the Board of Ed.
Mr. Moderator, I have the following motion. Resolve that the sum of $1,402,000 be and the same as hereby appropriated to be added to the capital account number Z68017805956013124, known as safety and security.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 17 has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Mr. Moderator, good evening, members. We had taken this up on April 1st. We have Ms. Moriarty, the Chairman of the Board of Ed, Dr. McKeersey, the Superintendent, Ron Madden, the Director of Facilities, and Bob Makowski, who's the Director of Safety, helping us with the item. Dr. McKeersey set the stage for kind of the tone of this item, which is really to harden the exterior of the buildings and also then help make things invisible inside. Mr. Madden explained that each of the items that are listed in the appropriation, what they were for, how they work in improving the safety of the students, teachers, and administrators, and guests of the schools. Some questions raised by the committee, besides the ability for the schools to monitor, we were concerned and read questions about who else could monitor the video feeds that are able to be done, and there's no ability outside of the school to monitor those feeds. There is an anticipated way for the police special services to be able to plug in and tap into those feeds once they're on site, but no remote monitoring was possible, which was a concern to our committee. Were there any future appropriations that are part of this item that will no longer be needed? We were told that approximately $50,000 was pulled from the FY14, next year's budget, and made part of this request. Question regarding state and federal guidelines existing, and how do these meet up or measure up to those? It was explained that these were produced, I'll say, at the same time, if not in advance of receiving state and other guidelines, and they're very consistent in what was produced in those other findings. So we're very pleased with the quality and the capability of the team that put this together. Last question that we asked, was there anything that was not included that they felt should have been, or something that was taken away that should have been? We had a brief discussion about the bollards, which are posts that prevent vehicles from getting by them, but the Board of Ed had removed them. There was some discussion about that, nothing really remarkable. Remarkable, excuse me. The vote on this item was 11-00 with District Two absent, and appreciate all the hard work of the group putting these state VIs together. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with our Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted 12-00 on this item. It was well presented by Dr. McKeersey and Leslie Moriarty, along with two other gentlemen, Ron and Tom, and we urge you to support it. The only real question that come up at the Finance Committee meeting was, where do you draw the line when it comes to school security? And when do you know when you have too much or not enough? That's a philosophical question. It's really rhetorical at this point. We don't know. But we do commend the Board of Ed and Dr. McKeersey and his team for the job they did. We think it's thorough. It's completely outlined in your explenos, and we encourage you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 17. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined items, numbers 1, 3, 5, 7, 8, 12, 14, 16, and 17, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will continue with the business of the meeting. Item six now comes before us. Al Kama, Director of Labor Relations.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Resolve that the representative town meeting, in exercising its authority pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7474(b), hereby approves the funds necessary as reported to the RTM by the first selectman. Implement the terms of the town ASME Local 1303222 Council for Collective Bargaining Agreement, covering the periods Fiscal 1213, Fiscal 1314, and Fiscal 1415. That the approval of this resolution satisfies the requirements of the RTM budget resolution as set forth in the Fiscal 2013 Adopted Budget as Resolution 54. Be it further resolved that the representative town meeting approves any terms of such agreement which may be in conflict with town charter, Special Act, Ordinance Rule, or Regulation adopted by the town or authorized agents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item six has been moved and seconded. David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, this collective bargaining agreement covers 21 nurses, 18 of whom are working as school nurses, working on a 10-month school year, and one of whom is part-time, and will cover the period retroactively from 1 July 2012 to 30 June 2015. This collective bargaining unit's last contract was negotiated by the town and approved by the RPM just before the economic troubles began. As a result, this group of employees had not yet been asked to agree to a 0% GWI for at least one year, but pursuant to this collective bargaining agreement, under consideration here-- here, they will in fact agree to a 0% GWI for the current fiscal year from 1 July 2012 to 30 June 2013. With this agreement, every town employee governed by collective bargaining agreement, both civilian and uniformed, will have granted to the town at least one year of 0% GWI. The agreement under review calls for a 2.25% GWI in each of the second and third fiscal years of the contract. This appears to be fairly much in line with GWI rates reached in other towns in this part of Connecticut, where the GWIs have ranged mostly between 1.5% and 2.75% for 2013 and 2014, and between 2% and 3%, you can see a slight creep up there, for 2014 and 2015. As the BET Guidelines of September, of 13 November 2012 reported, while the average increase in GWI in steps between 2000 and 2007 was 3.91%, between 2008 and today, the average increase in GWI in steps was only 2.71%, or about 1.2 percentage points lower per year in this period since the recession began. However, please keep in mind that we cannot expect GWI in steps to be a major or even principal area of cost savings for the town in regard to labor costs. First, elimination of steps would have to be negotiated with the unions. Second, if in the GWI negotiations our proposal is too far outside what's negotiated in other Connecticut towns, we will be forced to engage in mandatory arbitration, where the GWI will eventually be imposed upon us and will likely be higher than what we desire. Third, the town often uses the GWI as a bargaining chip to gain concessions from the unions in other areas of negotiations, where we believe we have an opportunity for even greater cost savings than we can get from the GWI negotiations. Another benchmark for you to consider in regard to this contract is that the minimum pay for nurses in Greenwich is the fifth lowest out of about two dozen Connecticut towns surveyed, while the maximum pay is no more than 14th highest among those 24 Connecticut towns. Thus, our minimum pay for nurses is higher than the median in comparable communities, but our maximum pay is in fact below the median. A key aspect of this negotiation was the fact that the town has been successful in having yet another collective bargaining unit adopt what the town wants to be the standard health care package for all employees of the town. This includes specifically an HSA with 2,000 and 4,000 deductibles, and a 10-25-40 prescription co-pay structure with the employees' cost share of the premiums being 10%. The town is hopeful that by the completion of the 2013 and 2014 ground negotiations, all unions will have adopted this program. I call your attention to the so-called Cost of Contract Table that was included in the materials with the explenos. Note that the numbers indicated for the period start in 1 July 2012 are real, actual numbers. The cost of contract increase for the current fiscal year will indeed be 0.14%, primarily due to the 0% GWI and the lack of any health insurance premium increase. However, the numbers and percentage increases in that table for 2013-14 and 2014-15 are theoretical constructs. They assume that the premium cost for the health insurance program would be the same as in 2011 through 2012. That is clearly not going to be the case in 2014 and 2015, and in fact, the insurance premium increases may be quite significant. However, this table does give you a sense of how the town did in controlling labor cost increases from the perspective of the current labor and health care costs. Your Labor Contracts Committee met with the town's labor negotiator on 14 March to discuss the results of the negotiations. The vote of the committee was 4 to 1 to recommend that the RTM approve this contract. The one no vote was by Steve Rubin, who's the member of our committee who actually specializes in this particular area of health care, who noted that he understood the finer points of the negotiated changes and agreed that they made strategic sense, but he nevertheless is very concerned about the structure of health care coverage in the town and the implications of that structure in the future, when the Affordable Care Act is more fully implemented. He recognizes that the entire Labor Contract Committee would recommend approval of this agreement for now, but he wanted through his no vote to call the RTM's attention to future challenges for the town in controlling health care, health care costs. The fact is, we're rather happy that Steve voted as he did, for it reflects the fact that your internal Labor Contracts Committee has been concerned that the Affordable Care Act is going to turn upside down the world of employer-employee relations in regard to health care over the next four or five years, quite possibly to the point that the town may be forced to consider whether it is feasible to continue to provide health care for its employees. The committee is not analyzing whether the Affordable Care Act is good, bad, or indifferent piece of legislation, but rather is attempting to perceive what its impact will be on the town's health care programs and its labor negotiations in that regard. In fact, it's difficult to anticipate right now what will be the impact of the act. It's likely to be amended. There's likely to be additional regulations issued, but clearly there will be challenges for the town. Steve, in outlining the reasons for his vote, stated the following. Health care in America has recently been forever reinvented, and we need to think differently about how the town as an employer supports this coverage. For GWI, the town negotiates for what the town will pay, but for health care, the town uniquely negotiates what the employee will pay. This leaves the town's liability for health care costs relatively open-ended, because as costs continue to escalate, the employees' cost sharing has built in limitations, but the town must pick up any shortfall. The Affordable Care Act passed three years ago. It has increased the number of dependents the town ensures, the services the town is required to cover, and the taxes and fees the town is required to pay. The town is also coming to the end of a rare two-year rate contract fixed amount for health care plans, and recent data suggests that the town should anticipate a rate increase that is significantly outside its norm of the town's expectations. Those of us in the Labor Contracts Committee who voted to recommend approval of this contract share Steve's concerns, but believe that the major problems regarding health care that Steve cites will likely occur in the next round of negotiations with the town's unions after 2015. Please be aware that your Labor Contracts Committee has been addressing this issue of the future structure of health care coverage with the town's negotiator for more than two years, and will continue to do so as matters evolve. Let me make one last note, and that is, this was a fairly long report, but I think those of us on the committee feel that precisely because this is not a standing committee, and not every district is represented, it's incumbent upon us to give you as much of our thinking as possible in our reports to you, and that's the reason for today's length. Thanks.
Thank you. Before continuing, let me announce the result of the vote on the combined calendar items. Those were Items 1, 3, 5, 7, 8, 12, 14, 16, and 17. Those in favor, 183; opposed, 5; abstaining, 1. The combined calendar items have carried. Josh Brown with the report of the Education Committee on Item 6.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Education Committee took this up on the 1st of April. We had the Chairman...
I think we're having an issue with the microphone. If you could try and pull that closer.
I've never been spoken to about it not being heard, but okay. Hope this is better.
Oh, come on!
I have to go like this. Your Education Committee met on the 1st of April. We had Ms. Moriarty, the Chair of the Board of Ed, Superintendent McKeersey, Alkava, the Contract Negotiator, and Mr. Detchin of Labor Contracts. I have nothing to add to his report. The vote was 11-0-0 with District Two absent.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with our Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can I be heard? Did you notice, ladies and gentlemen, when the mic doesn't work, the reports are shorter?[1220.15][1220.15](Laughter). The Finance Committee voted 11-0-0, District 10 absent. Thank you.
Thank you.[1228.15][1228.15](Laughter). And Ms. Vulgaris with our Health and Human Services report.
I've learned a very valuable lesson that if you get to go last, you can just give your vote. So, I have nothing to add. Health and Human Services cannot add because we've had such comprehensive reports before this. So, our vote was 12-0-0 to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 6. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 6, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item number 9 now comes before us. David Teis, our Selectman.
Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/16, John M. Hartwell.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 9 has been moved and seconded. Karen Sodik Khan, new member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board and Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members. John Hartwell is a new nomination to the Board of Parks and Recreation. He came to our meeting Tuesday night, and we interviewed him for about 20 minutes. John has a diverse set of interests in serving on the board, and described them in four areas. Beaches, he wants to assure that the town keeps the pricing of non-residents high enough so that we are not serving non-residents more than residents. Parks, his number-one interest and priority is the Byram Pool Project. He hopes it can succeed as a public-private partnership, as he feels the facility is in drastic need of renovation. Golf, he loves the Grifft Golf Course, run by Dave DeAndrea, who he complimented, but he would like to have a review of the fees for non-residents. They are higher than other local golf courses, and therefore, he thinks it discourages residents from bringing their guests to the Grifft. Last area, he has extensive background in coaching. He's coached all sports at all ages. He currently coaches little kids' football and is a part-time coach at the middle school for boys and girls' sports. The vote was 10-1-1. The reason for the negative and the abstention votes was that in lieu of the person who he's replacing on the board, who is John Crane, who had an extensive background in marine, there was some interest that perhaps the nominee coming forth should have helped replace that skill set on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Kaiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Mr. Hartwell, we saw on the 13th of March, we voted 12-0-0. The gentleman is one of us, for better or for worse, from District 4. He's a hard-working fellow, done lots of work in the area of Byram and that side of town. We're always happy to see a good spread of representation throughout the community on our boards, and this gives a good representation from the western end, and we recommend it most highly at 12-0... Excuse me. 12-0-0, yes.
Discussion on Item 9. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number 9, proceed to poll your delegation. Item 13 now comes before us. May we have that resolution? So, Board of Ethics nomination? David Teis, our Selectman.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring 3/31/16, Lee Ann D. Tolzman.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 13 has been moved and seconded. John Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee. I'd ask our committee chairs to please anticipate their reporting obligations.
Thank you. The vote was 11-0-0 with District 4 absent. We voted to defer this till next time because Ms. Tolzman was not available.
So, your vote was on a motion to postpone to our June meeting?
No.
Okay. All right. Mr. Harkins, just hang on one moment. Mr. Von Kaiseling, did you care to give a report on this in light of the Town Services Committee motion to postpone, which has not yet been made? Mr. Harkins reported that he will make it after all reports.
I appreciate that, Mr. Moderator. We met with Ms. Tolzman on the 27th of March. The vote was 12-0-0, but we defer to our fellow members in the Town Services.
Mr. Harkins, you may now make the motion on behalf of your committee.
Thank you. Our motion was to defer this item until the June meeting because Ms. Tolzman was not available to be interviewed.
All right. A motion to postpone on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second. I will take a voice vote on this. If you are in favor of putting this off until our June meeting, you should vote in favor. If you want to take it up tonight, you should vote no. All those in favor of the Town Services Committee motion to postpone Item 13 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion has carried. Item, the last agenda item now comes before us. This is Item Number 8. Peter Tessie, our first Selectman.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and...
Did I say 8? Number 18, my apologies.
Good evening once again, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item Number 18, there is a substitute resolution as there were two transcription errors in the administration of the call. It reads, "Resolve that the first selectman is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with the Connecticut Clean Energy and Finance Authority, SEFI, that will allow the town of Greenwich to opt into the commercial property assessed Clean Energy Program, CPACE Program." The two corrections were with "with" and the spelling of Greenwich.[1658.83][1658.83](Laughter).
Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on Item 18 has been moved and seconded. Gordon Ennis with our Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, we had an unusual vote in the Finance Committee on this item. Three voted in favor, Districts 3, 4, and 6. Five voted against, Districts 1, 2, 7, 8, and 12, and four districts abstained. The following reasons are basically why people voted in favor of the item. 28 states have similar plans, and it's widely accepted in Fairfield County. At least, we understand that many of the towns in Fairfield County are expected to sign up. And CPACE is really another option for owners to use to finance clean energy conversions. On the negative side, there were a number of doubts expressed by committee members as follows. Some important details were still under negotiation when we met to vote on this item, so that was a concern. The loans would be subordinate to the property tax, but they would stand in front of all other assessments. There's also great discomfort in using the town's tax-collecting authority and machinery to collect loans for commercial banks. No one was able to cite any significant level of demand from owners who would currently qualify for the program. The program was maybe useful, as it was indicated anyway. It could be useful in cities like New Haven and Bridgeport, but there are about, well, there's less than 700 commercial properties in Greenwich that would fall under this program, and they don't appear. Those are... owners don't appear to require this kind of funding. Why should government expand into the banking business, which is, when lending, rather, is a core competency for banks? And finally, in the event of a default, the town's sewer bonds would be subordinate to these loans. Unbalanced, the committee urges you to vote against this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, the Legislative and Rules Committee met jointly with the Finance Committee to pick up this item resolution that requests that the RTM permit the First Selectman to enter into an agreement with CEPIA whereby the town will participate in a program that will facilitate financing for clean energy improvements to commercial buildings in our town. If we permit the town to sign this agreement, we will become a municipal member of CPACE. We had the following persons who addressed our committee and answered questions of our committee members. Our First Selectman, Peter Tessie, Jessica Bailey, who is Director of CPACE, Assistant Town Attorney, Jean McLaughlin, and Town Tax Collector, Todd Ladonia. CPACE is a program that was performed, was formed pursuant to enabling legislation passed by the Connecticut Legislature in June 2012 that is designed to help commercial, industrial, and multiple-family property owners obtain affordable long-term financing for smart energy upgrades to their buildings. CPACE allows building owners to finance qualifying energy efficiency and clean energy improvements by placing a voluntary assessment on their property tax bill. Property owners pay for the improvements over time through this, through an additional charge on their property tax bill and the repayment obligation transfers automatically to the next owner if the property is sold. Similar to a sewer tax assessment, capital provided under the CPACE program is secured by a lien on the property so low-interest financing can be raised from the private sector with no government financing required. Ms. Bailey provided us with an overview of the program. As Mr. Ennis indicated, there are 18 Connecticut towns that have opted into CPACE, including Fairfield County towns of Norwalk, Westport, and Stamford. She explained that CPACE provides expert, expertise to ensure that the commercial owner's application will provide energy savings that is clean and green and will result in a payback to the commercial owners in a relatively short period of time. The interest rate on the private funding is competitive because of the priority lien status of the loan payment and it can be stretched out over a 20-year payback period. In order for the lending to be approved, any existing mortgage lender must agree that the CPACE payback be given priority over their mortgage loan. For its part, the town serves as a conduit for the loan repayments by way of a municipal assessment that is collected along with the municipal real estate taxes. And while the town retains priority lien status with respect to the realty taxes, CPACE payments will take precedence over sewer use and assessment charges imposed by the town. They also provide expertise by way of loan review and underwriting to ensure that the commercial owner will be able to pay back the loan. No loan is approved to any property that has a mortgage, has mortgage liens in excess of 80% of the value of the realty. She also pointed out that there is no prepaying penalty to the commercial owner for paying off a loan early. This may be helpful to a commercial owner who is considering selling his property prior to the loan payoff date. Our committee then heard from Assistant Town Attorney, Jean McLaughlin, who handed out a redlined version of the agreement, which highlights revisions that have been made to the agreement since the document was placed in the mailing to the RTM members with the call documents. Please note that the RTM will be voting on the agreement as revised. I saw that the revisions were handed out to, to all of the members, to the district chairs this evening. So that is the one that you'll be voting on and perhaps approving after hearing from all speakers tonight. I think the most important change that you should be aware of is the one that Attorney McLaughlin pointed out, that this agreement has no termination date. It was open-ended and so the town insisted upon and CEPIA agreed that the town can opt out of this agreement upon 60 days' notice to CEPIA. Some in our committee were concerned that there would be incremental costs to the town as a result of the collection of the CPACE assessments. Our Town Tax Collector, Todd Ladonia, answered that there are 682 commercial properties that would be eligible for this loan financing. The CPACE assessment would be an incremental part of the real estate bills that go out twice per year among the many thousands of bills that are issued. As a result, Mr. Ladonia saw no additional cost to the town in collecting this assessment. We took two votes on the matter. The first was as to legal order. Our vote was seven in favor, three opposed, with Districts 1 and 3 absent. The negative votes were from Districts 5, 7, and 10. We then took a vote on the merits. Our vote there was seven in favor, two opposed, with one abstention. The negative votes, again, were from Districts 7 and 10 and the abstention was District 5. The negative votes were based on the belief that the town should not be in the business of collecting and paying over money for the benefit of private lenders and others who voted negatively were concerned about the fact that the CPACE assessment takes priority over municipal sewer use and assessments. They saw some risk to the town in the event of foreclosure. Those of us who were in favor of this agreement to opt into the program saw it as a good social policy which will provide our town and our state with cleaner energy and provide us with conservation of our energy resources at no significant cost to the town. We also thought it unlikely that the town wouldn't be able to collect on its unpaid sewer use and assessments in the event of a default because the town enjoys a priority over mortgages, mortgage lenders in any event. Furthermore, because of the opt-out provision inserted in the revised agreement, if for any reason the town believes it is not in its best interest to continue in the CPACE program, we can opt out on 60 days' notice.
Thank you. Before calling for discussion on Item 18, I do have the result of the vote on Item 16, that is the collective bargaining agreement for the town nurses. Those in favor, 184; opposed, 4; abstaining, 3. That item has carried. Item 6. I did. That was Item 6. All right. We have inflation here. All right, discussion on Item 18. I do have five names of interested speakers. We'll begin there. Jessica Bailey, Director of CEPIA, to be followed by Hank Ashforth.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight and for listening to a very brief remarks on the CPACE program. I thought the committee reports laid out the issues quite nicely. I work for CEPIA, the Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority, which is a quasi-state agency that is empowered through legislation to administer the CPACE program. The CPACE program, as I think most of you know, was set up by policy passed in June by the State Legislature of Connecticut and it's essentially an economic development policy that allows interested property owners to access 100% upfront, long-term, low-cost financing to do qualified energy upgrades on their buildings. They then repay that as a benefit assessment charge on their property tax bill. The reason to use the property tax bill for the collection of this repayment is because of the security it lends to private investors into the program. It means we can move away from a clean energy system in the state that is subsidized by ratepayers and taxpayers and one to, one which is privately financed. It does, as you all know, require that the interested municipality opt into a legal agreement with CEPIA, the state agency. That's what's under discussion tonight. That agreement essentially says that the Town of Greenwich will, will serve as the collection mechanism for these repayments, remitting them over to CEPIA to pay the investors. I wanted to address just two of the comments that came up in the reports of the committees and in some emails that I was able to have a look at over the weekend. One was some confusion about whether or not this applies to residential homeowners. There has been an issue that some states that passed policy before Connecticut passed policy and allowed for residential homeowners to opt into these types of programs. That program is not available here in Connecticut. The state legislatures made sure that this is a financing program that is only available for commercial, industrial, and multifamily defined as five units or up. So all of the residential issues are a moot point here in Connecticut. The second issue is the priority of the lien and I heard some concern and it's very understandable that the PACE assessments would come ahead of any sewer assessments or sewer taxes due to the city of Greenwich. And this is something that was pulled right out of statute. This was the way the legislators in Connecticut wrote the bill. The reason they wrote the bill that way is because it keeps our ability to bring in low-cost capital there. The further down the line the PACE assessments get in the recollection mechanism, the higher the cost of capital for our building owners is. So we are situated by statute behind real property taxes but ahead of any other assessments due to the town. There are at least two reasons that this shouldn't be a meaningful monetary issue for the Town of Greenwich. One is that we're both in front of the mortgage on the property and the underwriting criteria that we have for these buildings require that there is at least 80% equity in the building, that the mortgage lender has signed off, that this building can take on this additional burden of repaying the benefit assessment charge. And, and in that way, it's very, very unlikely that a building owner would be able to pay his PACE assessments in the case of a foreclosure but not have anything left over to pay the sewer assessments. The second thing that should make Greenwich more comfortable on that front is the fact that the PACE assessments don't accelerate. So in the unlikely case that there was a foreclosure on a property with a PACE assessment on it, it would only be the past due PACE assessments that would ever come ahead of the sewer assessments due to the town. So we're not talking about a big, a big amount of money here. So I think I'll pause there. I just want to point out that I'm joined by Bert Hunter, all the way on the right, my right up here. Bert is a Greenwich resident. He's also the Chief Investment Officer of CEPIA, the state agency where I work. And Brian Farnin, who's our General Counsel and has been working with the town attorneys here, particularly Jean, on, on the legal agreement that I think you all have copies of right now. So with that, I'll pause. Thank you.
Thank you. Hank Ashforth, Ashforth to be followed by Steve Hall.
Yeah, thank you very much. Hank Ashforth here, I'm the Principal with the Ashforth Company. We are, you may know, a fourth-generation family-owned business that owns, owns real estate here in Connecticut, in Greenwich specifically, and other parts of the country, including Seattle, Portland, Oregon, San Francisco, Boston, what have you. We essentially look at the CPACE program as yet another tool that we use and have the ability to use as, as operators and owners of commercial real estate to improve the bottom-line performance of our assets and therefore the value of that assets, which again should certainly help the tax rolls in the communities that, that we own the property in. We, we plan on taking advantage of the program and as I say, where it is, where it has been approved in the cities and towns of Connecticut. We have been consciously doing this prior to the CPACE program. So what's left to do in our properties are some major, major things that may include energy management systems, heating and cooling devices, chillers, heaters, those types of things. As I say, we, it's the efficient use of capital, the most efficient use of capital from a, from a building owner's point of view, whether we go and seek this type of financing or do it out of our own cash flow. I think as I, as I, as I said, it's yet another tool for us to increase our net operating income and therefore the value of our properties. So thank you very much and I appreciate your time.
Mr. Hall, before I call on you, may we please have the voting cards for Item Number 9? We're waiting on that. Steve Hall to be followed by Denise Savageo.
Good evening. I'm Steve Hall. I'm a resident of Greenwich. I have consultancy on Greenwich Avenue. We specialize in project management of development and redevelopment of real estate projects. I speak about practical experience in energy renovations. We completed a renovation of the Princeton Club in New York. We reduced their energy consumption 50%, which is quite high, but it's still within the, the bounds of what's possible with many older buildings. 30% is not an unusual target to, to be able to reach. The club, I know, would have done hand springs had they had 100% financing for their energy retrofits. It was a very difficult financing obligation for them to, to raise the capital and to execute the project. So I, I, based on that experience, three years ago, I wrote an article, a white paper that was published on the value of building retrofits nationwide. I urged or suggested in that article that PACE was a good vehicle to achieve it. And it's not just being green, it's being economically sound for the building owner. So I really encourage the town to opt in for this program. I think it's a great program and it'll help the commercial building owners a great deal.
Thank you. Before proceeding, I do have a request. There is someone who is blocked and unable to leave right now by a maroon Toyota license plate, it looks like 443ACU, out back here. If you could please allow this individual to get out, we would appreciate it. Denise Savageo, Conservation Director, to be, to be followed by Adam Savitz of District 11.
Good evening. As Conservation Director, I've been working with the Conservation Commission and the First Selectman's Office on the Clean Energy Program and particularly as a clean energy community. And in 2010, we became a clean energy community. Entering into other opportunities presented by CEPIA is really important for us maintaining our status as a clean energy community and this is a benefit to the town in terms of being able to apply for different types of grants. We were able to put a nice 6K solar, solar system on the high school as part of our involvement in there at no cost to the town. And there's a handful of smaller mini-grants and different types of programs that are coming out that we will be eligible for. And part of the points that we can get as a clean energy community are opting into a program like CPACE. Our, our enrollment is important in that. Overall, however, I think just the idea that as a sustainable community, as we enter into clean energy and energy conservation, this is the right thing to do for our town, for our business community, and the Conservation Commission urges you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Savitz, District 11. I do have the result of the vote on Item 9. That was the appointment of John Hartwell. Those in favor, 171; opposed, 15; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. Mr. Savitz?
Thank you, Moderator, fellow members and guests. I want to encourage you to vote yes on Item 18. By voting yes, landlords may choose to use or not use these loans. Landlords should have the choice of what times type of loans are in their best interests. Further, if these loans lead to building improvements, increased occupancy in the town, this will increase our tax base and will help offset future expenses for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Item 18.
I'm Sue Baker and I'm here to encourage you to support Item 18. It's a clean energy funding-
I think they're having trouble hearing. If you could pull that, thanks.
Thanks. This is a clean energy funding mechanism that is actually an energy rights issue. It is, as was suggested, kind of a pro-choice issue in that it enables commercial and business people to have the right to make a choice. If a business or person or commercial endeavor is not interested in applying for low-cost funding that would enable them to either enhance or install alternative energy equipment, they don't have to. But don't take that right away from the people who want to, who want to commercially and from a business standpoint, enhance their alternative energy opportunities. Our diverse Board of Selectmen is in support of this. It is seen as a win-win situation. The first win, the first plus is of course, alternative energy that cuts down carbon dioxide emissions and that is definitely a plus. And of course, the second plus is that it cuts the cost of energy bills for the businessman because he has been able, been enabled to go after a loan at a low cost to provide alternative energy. So why not support Item 18?
Further discussion on Item 18. John Dolan, District 7. John Dolan, District 7.
I came through a period with the mortgage crisis where issues were wrapped in the American flag, weather, and apple pie. And we've got another example here where people are being told that this is a green energy issue that we have to make available to people. There are opportunities for people to take on green energy. That's offered by the private sector. And all the arguments that you heard earlier tonight about why does this have to be incorporated into the public sector still remain. Yes, we want to have green energy. Nobody here who's saying to vote no on this bill is saying vote for dirty energy, okay? We're just saying keep it in the private sector, not the public sector. Now, one of the other challenges that came up in terms of our discussion about this bill was, we wanted to hear somebody in Greenwich champion a need for this product. We've heard that it worked in Manhattan. We've heard that it might work in Seattle. We've heard that it might work in other Connecticut towns. We've yet to hear anybody tonight say, if this goes through, I will do a renovation in Greenwich. So absent the need for a renovation in Greenwich, and absent the need for a private sector that doesn't work in Greenwich, but we do have one that works in Greenwich, I don't see any reason to vote yes on this bill.
Further discussion on item 18. Erv Porter, District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to give the white-haired version of energy. And I'd like to go back to the first oil price shock. Since the first oil price shock, which was 1975, bring that forward to today, and I'll just share with you some factual information that basically tells you what Connecticut's competitiveness is, A, and more importantly, what this would do if we opt into this program relative to Greenwich's competitiveness. In the residential area since 1975, Connecticut's residential energy use has increased 37%. In the commercial sector, it's increased 85%. In the industrial sector, it's dropped 4% because most of the industrials have left the state. In the transportation sector, whether it be diesel or gasoline, anything that you use to move by transport, it's increased 68%. And in the electric power sector, it's increased 88%. Two numbers then, 85% relative to the commercial side, 88% when it comes to the electric power sector. The good news relative to Connecticut is that it is basically in balance when it comes to the amount of electricity it generates and the amount of electricity that it consumes. The only two exporting states in New England are Maine and New Hampshire. One could argue, and this is an initiative that the governor has taken to increase the amount of natural gas that can flow into the state, is in order to have a more favorable impact and replace oil or coal with gas. So having said that, I step back and I give you one other thought. If you take all of the states in New England and you throw in New Jersey and look at their total energy consumption, it's equivalent to that of New York. New York is as big as an energy, I'm talking as the state now. The whole state of New York is as big an energy consumer as all of New England plus New Jersey. Now, I believe the commercial sector in Greenwich, whether we have old buildings today or we don't, is in a competitive environment. I think Mr. Ashforth would say that as well. And given that, if all this does is to provide an option for people to look at how they can reduce their overall energy consumption, energy efficiency, this is not a green energy program. This is an opportunity for people to look at reasonable investments to reduce their total energy use. That's energy conservation. And as an old industrial that's been kicked out of a lot of places because we just could not compete, either in parts of the United States or worldwide, the bottom line is that you have to be able to compete in the commercial sector. And that's very, very important for Greenwich as well. In that context, I ask you, I really urge you to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Further discussion on item 18. Mr. DeChapelle, District 5.
If we can opt out, so can other towns. Who'd be left owning the bag in case of a recession and if there's a number of non-performing loans? I didn't perceive any explanation for this question. The town of Greenwich is a town of individual householders on the whole. We're a bedroom community. Industrial and commercial is a lower proportion of our tax revenue. Therefore, I urge you to either postpone until we better understand it or to vote no. Thank you.
Bob Brady, Member of the BET.
See if I can make this thing work. Can everybody hear me? I'm speaking as Bob Brady, not as a member of the BET. Since sometime in the late 70s, I have been one way or another in the energy business. I was involved in raising money to put insulation in windows in New York City buildings. I've done small-scale cogeneration, large-scale cogeneration. We're working on a project out in Oregon to drill into Newbury Volcano to do a geothermal The one problem that has worked against the energy conservation and alternative energy industry has been the scarcity of capital, long-term capital priced at reasonable terms. It's simply been difficult to get. This program, CPACE, offers building owners, developers, the opportunity to obtain capital on a long-term basis at competitive rates. The payment mechanism, not the capital, but the payment mechanism, is developed as an agreement between the town and the state SEFI, the state agency, in which the town agrees to collect the amount of money involved through its tax levying power, through its tax-raising authority, and remit it on to the state. If the building, and the reason this works for an owner, as opposed to the more conventional mechanism of using, say, a second mortgage, is that the second mortgage is of lower priority. The second mortgage attaches to the owner, whereas the CPACE program attaches to the building. So if the owner changes, the levy is still present and on the building. The lender, the ultimate city banks and whoever they are out there that put the money up to do the work, are protected, and they are willing to lend long-term on this. This is not the town of Greenwich lending money. It is not the state lending money. It's not the state taking money from the utilities system benefit charges, which are on your electric and gas bills and putting it into it. This is private capital going to private companies to improve the efficiency of their properties. As Mr. Porter indicated, efficiency is the name of the game. It's what keeps you in business. If you don't do it, you die. Purpose of it is to get efficiency. Mr. Dolan, I believe, mentioned that no one in Greenwich would use this program. I believe we heard earlier from Mr. Ashforth that, in fact, as an owner in Greenwich, of buildings in Greenwich, they would consider it. They're bigger, I believe they've got properties down at the railway station. There are other properties in Greenwich which are actually town-owned, which might benefit from this because of the structure of the ownership. The library, for example, is a privately-owned structure. Whether it qualifies as commercial or not, I don't know. But should it qualify, should it go into this, the benefits, of course, would flow to the taxpayers because we pay the cost of operating the library, including its energy bills. In any event, I urge you to vote in favor of this. It doesn't cost the town but a small amount, according to Mr. LaDonia, and it doesn't put the town at risk. Thank you.
Frank Collins, Losing Name, District 8.
Good evening. I'll be very brief. One thing that we need to understand, I'm an industrial designer. I do a lot of architectural renovation work in this town. And I worked on, in my career, a lot of commercial and large facilities and residential facilities. And even current construction that's going on, there's not always a very strong consciousness to energy efficiency. Very often, a building will be built by a contractor with the sole purpose of trying to find a structure that they could sell and serve a reasonable profit for their efforts. And then the new owner is going to be coming into, it often happens, comes into a building and has to make upgrades to make that structure, that envelope, as efficient as possible for their operations to be profitable and comfortable. So we need to understand too that, you know, even current buildings that are going up now aren't going to be as energy efficient as we may sometimes want to believe they're going to be constructed to, and residences certainly aren't always constructed to very high standards, in my opinion, of any efficiency. And this opportunity seems to have a lot of safeguards for us as a town and for opportunities for individuals to try this program out and then to pass that information on to other building individuals and even our municipality to see if this program has benefits, and those benefits could be passed on town to town. The information could be shared, resources could be shared, system studies could be shared, afford somebody the opportunity to put in some kind of an efficiency benefit into a building that serves them very well. That information could come around and go a lot longer distance and serve a lot more of us than just the town of Greenwich. We'll learn from each other, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to think a little further than ourselves because energy efficiency is going to be a booger boo that we're going to be, it's a losing war that we're losing now. We need to do everything attainable to give us an opportunity to beat it. Thank you.
Further discussion on item 18. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Harvey E. Player, resident of Greenwich, who'd like to speak in favor.
Yes, please come forward.
Can you hear me? I hadn't expected to say anything tonight, but after hearing the discussion on this subject, I thought maybe I should. I came here actually because of Steve Hall, who I know personally, and he told me about CPACE. I hadn't been familiar with it before. And I had asked him whether it could possibly benefit some of the residential buildings in town that are cooperatives. Now, cooperatives are corporations. They have their own tax ID. Steve asked a question to perhaps this lady, and the answer came that, that it could. Not would, but could. So I sent an email to our property manager and CC'd the president of our board and also a board member who's an architect. The architect, I don't, he doesn't work in town, he works elsewhere. He hadn't been aware of it. And the property manager began asking me questions. I also had mentioned what Steve had told me to a client of mine who lives in another older building in town. That wouldn't work. That's a condominium, separate tax ID numbers. But there are five cooperatives in Greenwich. Three of them are on Steamboat Road, high-tax district, and the other two are Putnam Hill and Putnam Park. I'm in Putnam Park, and I've been told, if I recall correctly, that we are something like the third highest taxpayer in Greenwich. I vote that the RTM, Mr. Moderator, excuse me, I didn't acknowledge you in the beginning. This is my first time at an RTM meeting. Consider favorably the resolution before the RTM tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion on item 18. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 18, proceed to poll your delegation. Since that is the final item on our agenda tonight, we will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding to adjourn.
...
Let me give you a big smile, yeah? Make a star out of you, yeah?
No, I've been trying to get this data file. Not only is it, uh, I can't even get ahold of this summer. It's the guy who actually had data. So I'm, I'm thinking that first he was telling me, well, he's about, you know, probably dead. Now, it's still not there. I never got a answer. So he is a theory.
We have the result of the vote on item 18, the CPACE authorization. Those in favor, 114, opposed 58, abstaining 10. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you very much for coming. Have a safe trip home.